Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the November 1st, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. And, boy, what a way to start November, huh? There's a nice November 1st, as I can remember. Before we start the city council meeting tonight, I wanted to let folks know we're doing this in a hybrid fashion. Folks are watching on cable TV or on their computer or on Facebook on their computer. And there's a couple of different ways you can participate in community comment or in the public hearing matter we have this evening, and that is either to be in the audience, like many people are this evening, or they be calling in. And if you want to call in for either community comment or for the public hearing, here's your conference ID number or your phone number, 786-496-5601. There's the conference PIN number. Press star one to speak to the operator, and the operator will get you to Director Bennerott. She'll bring into the council so that we can hear your thoughts or your perspective on these issues. Now, remember that if you're calling in for community comment or if you're in the audience for community comment, you're allowed to talk to the council about anything except something that's on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing. So having provided that information, let's call the meeting to order, and we'll ask our clerk Sharon Allison, who's been working hard with all the absentee voting. Seems like you're working seven days a week lately.
Seems like it.
To call the order for the meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson is absent. Mayor Hovland.
Here. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, folks. And now, we've got a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Is there anyone who wishes to modify the agenda on the council or the staff? All right. Is there a motion to approve the meeting agenda as published?
Someone.
Second. A motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce to approve the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated to adopt the meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Next, now, we are back to community comment. So we're going to take folks that are in the audience first with respect to community comment. Again, if you want to talk to the council about a concern that you have with regard to a matter that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, feel free to come forward. And don't forget to give us your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to make your presentation. You'll get a yellow light when you got about 30 seconds left, and it will ask you to wrap up. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Jeff Nicholson. I live at 6209 Lockmore Drive, and I'm here to address an issue in front of the whole council that I just learned of about an hour and a half ago, but it's not a new issue to the council, and I know it's not a new issue to Mr. Teague. It is the memory residential facilities that are being propagated throughout Edina. I just learned that we're going to get our third in one block within 500 feet of each other across the street from my house. When I purchased my home seven years ago, I did not realize in Braemar Hills was becoming a memory residential facility area. So English Rose, this will be their third one on one block. It appears they're purchasing the home next to another one of their facilities, and I know this has been an issue in Parkwood Knolls and in other neighborhoods. All our neighbors are up in arms about it and unhappy, and I know this has been an issue in front of the city council in the past or at least been brought up. I don't begrudge the owner of English Rose for making a living and providing a service, but I do kind of begrudge the city that this is an issue that's been brought up and that the city planning department should have addressed with zoning updates. I'm a builder and a remodeler. I know there's codes and zoning statutes, but when you have a memory care facility that has nurses coming at all times of day, visitors at all times of day, four cars parked in the driveway at all times of the day, it's not good for property values. It's not good for quality of life. I get it if there's one every block or two or scattered about three in one little section. It was brought to the attention in 2018 when they opened the second one across the street, and now here we are again. So before this third one goes through, as a builder and remodeler, I'm very familiar with moratoriums. There was a moratorium on new home building in Minneapolis at one point that got dropped out of the sky. I think a moratorium on these group residential medical facilities in R1 residential neighborhoods could be implemented very quickly by the city council and addressed, and some statutes put in place that would separate these by a greater distance than next door, literally. I don't, you know, yeah, I mean, I don't begrudge English Rose for being a business, but it's time the city, you know, enact some codes that deals with this three-in-one block, because the next response to myself and my neighbors will be, it's going to reduce our property value, and we'll be coming looking for a reduction in our property taxes. And partly one of the reasons people would move from the street is all the traffic. It's unsafe, the corner, the traffic. So we certainly will look for the city to address this issue that I know isn't even isolated to this location, but certainly it seems to be a popular spot for these businesses. They are businesses, for-profit businesses ran by nobody in that building with employees coming at all times of day and visitors. It's not a family situation. It's not a residential activity. It has no business in a residential neighborhood. Thank you.
Mr. Nicholson, can you stick around for a couple of minutes?
Sure.
And sit in the audience. Usually, our practice is to address these matters two weeks from now.
Yep.
But I think you'd like an answer quicker than that, and I think we can provide one, at least generally from our city attorney, because we run into this issue before. We run headlong into a state statute that precludes us from regulating group homes of, I think, where there's six or fewer residents living in that home. They can go basically anywhere they want, and our code doesn't have anything to say about it. So stand by. I think we'll have our city attorney address that issue, but let's get through the rest of the community comment first.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in this evening. Understand the situation and know those operators at English Rose Garden Suites as well. And maybe we can't address it completely tonight, but we can at least give you a heads-up on what some of the headwinds are. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? Okay. All right. Anybody online?
No.
All right. Let's turn to Dave Kendall, our city attorney. I'm sure this is an issue, Dave, that comes up in many of the communities that your law firm represents. It's something we've certainly seen before. I remember we had several homes over on 49th Street a few years ago that were converted, eventually sold and converted into beautiful twin homes, but nonetheless, why don't you talk a little bit about the constraints the city faces on both with respect to a moratorium or just limiting or the issues that we face dealing with memory care units where there's six or fewer people involved or whatever the number is?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor and council. First of all, I should say, I don't know, there's no application before the city. I don't know the details about this particular development, but what I can tell the council is that there is a statute, which is 462.357 subdivision seven, which says that a state licensed residential facility shall be permitted with six or fewer people in it, shall be a permitted use in a residential district statewide. So that's the statute that often comes into play when we receive applications regarding facilities like this. So the city would be prohibited, if this is a state licensed facility or a facility serving persons with disabilities, would be prohibited from trying to limit that with zoning under this statute. Now, that's all I can say now, because that's all I know at this point.
That's all we know.
Yeah.
That's the general rule.
That's the statute, and if there's other details I'm not aware of, then the answer could be different, but that's what generally prohibits the city from regulating uses like this.
Andrew Neal.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we can take a look at this in a little bit more detail between now and the next meeting and bring you a report based on. We'll give a verbal report at the next meeting.
And, you know, I thought Mr. Nicholson made a couple of interesting points. One was the location of multiple facilities within the same block, for example. So you've got them side by side or maybe a few houses away in a single-family neighborhood. Has anybody, have you seen any cases on that issue of the power of a city to regulate how many you can have in your community or where they might be located in the community or how close to each other they can be located? Just a general case law again I'm talking about. Have you seen anything like that?
Yeah, Mayor. So if they were applying for reasonable accommodation under the federal housing statute, it would come into play how much traffic they're generating and other factors like that. So if the city were asked to provide reasonable accommodation to allow more than six individuals, for example, the city could take into account how much traffic is generated and what kind of impact that will have on the neighborhood. At this point, I'm not aware that they're requesting any kind of reasonable accommodation under the federal statute, but that would be the factors the city might consider if they were requesting some kind of accommodation.
Yeah. Well, I just know from doing work in the city for a long time that English Rose Garden Suites has been doing work in our community for a long time, has several facilities around. So my assumption is they know the rules and regulations of the state and know what they're permitted to do. I don't think they've ever come to us and asked for reasonable accommodation. I think we had a case a year or two ago where they did request reasonable accommodation and was denied, but until we see an application, we really can't opine further other than just providing that statutory information.
Correct. And Mayor, also, I should say, in addition to that statute section I cited, subdivision seven, 462.357 subdivision seven, there's also subdivision 6A, which references the fact that persons with disabilities, there's a presumption that they should be allowed to have a residential setting, live in a single-family home type of residential setting. So there's that, and persons with Alzheimer's are considered persons with disabilities. So there's that statute in play as well, but I don't know the particulars of this site. I'm just citing to you the general statutes that may apply.
Okay. All right. Yes, Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I definitely understand and respect the statutory that you, the two, you just read two. I get that, and I also could push to the extreme that that's still the same conversation that was being had decades ago that kept minorities out of communities too. And so I would encourage the city to think about this a little differently and not assess whether or not we can have those facilities there, because the statute is there for a reason, right, for fairness for everyone, but to dig into some of the ancillary challenges. And so if there's issues with traffic or there's issue with cars where they're parked or there's issues with pedestrian traffic, are there things that the city can do to help address some of those issues so that there can be a more amicable community around some of these houses? Like, those are the types of things that I think we have to look into, which has nothing to do with the statute, right? And so that's what I would just encourage us to try to think more creatively. Are there things that we can do to address those issues that have nothing to do with whether or not those homes can be used for that purpose?
All right. Thank you. Other council members? All right. Mr. Nicholson, would you let us, do we have your contact information at all, or can you leave, can you leave your email address with the clerk? Can you get it? Okay. All right. That concludes our community comment portion of the agenda this evening. We now move on to the city manager's response to community comments that occurred two weeks ago, and I'll turn it now over to Manager Neal.
We had no community comment offered at our previous meeting.
Okay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the, are the consent items. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing nothing, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda in the items in a single motion?
Still moved.
Second. Got a motion, second, to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of those items on the consent agenda in a single motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And now we're on to special recognitions and presentations. We've got two items in that category tonight, both proclamations. The first proclamation deals with what's called Extra Mile Day, and that is today, November 1st, 2022. And that Extra Mile Day proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively, quote, "go the extra mile," close quote, in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who, quote, "go the extra mile," close quote, in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Edina, Minnesota acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 550 extra-mile cities in America, and Edina is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2022. Is there a motion to adopt the Extra Mile Day proclamation?
Still moved.
Second. Got a motion, second, to adopt the Extra Mile proclamation designating today, November 1st, 2022, as Extra Mile Day in the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then the next matter in this portion of the agenda is another proclamation, as I mentioned earlier, and this deals with Lung Cancer Awareness Month, November 2022. Whereas lung cancer is a leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States, accounting for more deaths than colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined. And whereas the five-year survival rate for localized lung cancer is 60%, yet only 24% of lung cancers are diagnosed at this stage. And whereas funding for lung cancer research trials are far behind funding for research for many other forms of cancer, and additional research is needed in early diagnosis, screening, and treatment of lung cancer, as well as in lung cancer health disparities. And whereas lung cancer incidence is decreasing twice as fast in men as it is in women, each year more women die from lung cancer than breast cancer, and by 2035, more women will die from lung cancer than men. And whereas African-Americans have the highest lung cancer incidence and mortality of all races, and disparities in lung cancer screening, diagnoses, treatment, and mortality are well characterized among African-Americans and other racial minorities. And whereas organizations working in Edina, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women's Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating about lung cancer and lung cancer screening and working to increasing, to increase lung cancer screening rates. Now, therefore, I, James V. Hovland, Mayor of Edina, do hereby proclaim November 2022 to be Lung Cancer Awareness Month in Edina and recognize the need for research in lung cancer affecting women and lung cancer health disparities and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer and early detection through lung cancer screening. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation as stated?
Still moved.
Second. Motion, second, to adopt the Lung Cancer Awareness Month proclamation as read. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We don't have anybody here to accept these proclamations this evening, so we'll make sure that they get to the appropriate organizations. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The juxtaposition of these two proclamations together, I just have to say thank you to everybody who served on our Public Health Commission and all the work they did on tobacco awareness and Tobacco 21 and everything. I just, they've gone above and beyond and gone the extra mile in the work, and I think the two of these together, I just deserve a big thank you to everybody who's served on that commission and done such good work.
Yeah, good. Thanks for that comment. All right. Let's move on now to the next portion of the agenda, which is public hearings. We have one matter there, and that's the potential issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license, and I believe our clerk Sharon Allison has this matter. And after she completes her presentation, we'll open it for public testimony, because this is a public hearing matter. Clerk Allison?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Ichiban Japanese Restaurant, doing business as Ichiban Sushi, applied for an on-sale intoxicating and Sunday liquor license, and the usual back, or the required background check was completed on all the partners by Lieutenant Convoy, and based on that background check, he is recommending approval. This restaurant will be located at 3529 West 70th Street. They plan to open sometime in January or February. They have not completed their alcohol awareness training yet because they are still working on completing their building and hiring staff. Once they've hired staff, they will notify us when they'll be completing their alcohol awareness training, and that will be made a part of the record. My recommendation tonight is to open the public hearing and then to close that public hearing at noon on November 7th and continue action to the November 15th city council meeting.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Allison. Anybody have questions for Clerk Allison? Member Jackson.
Yes. Do you think that their training will be completed by the time we have to make a decision?
Not by the time you approve this license, and this is not unusual. Staff will follow up with them to make sure that that is in place before they open up.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Clerk Allison with regard to the Ichiban sushi application for the liquor license? All right. This is a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this matter? The potential issuance of a liquor license to Ichiban Sushi? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to turn now to Director Bennerott. Just a reminder, folks, of that phone number, if you want to call in and testify, it is 786-496-5601. There's the conference PIN number. Enter the PIN number after you call in and the pound sign, and then press star one to speak to the operator, and the operator will bring you to Director Bennerott, and then you can speak to the council. As is our practice during this period of time we're running hybrid meetings, we keep the public hearing open for about a week, and then we'll close it and deal with this matter at the next meeting of the city council on November 15th. Do we have anybody on the line, Director Bennerott?
We don't have anyone on the line at this time because there is slight delay in the broadcast, and we haven't had anyone else speak on this issue yet. I would recommend we wait a minute before moving forward. My clock shows that it's 7:24, so if that's okay, I will come back to you at 7:25 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
Thank you, Director Bennerott.
I think it's safe for you to move forward with the agenda.
All right. Very good. Clerk Allison is suggesting that the motion tonight be to close the public hearing at noon on November 7th and continue the action on the potential issuance of the liquor license to Ichiban Sushi to the November 15, 2022 city council meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Staunton, second by Member Pierce, to close the public hearing on the Ichiban sushi application for a liquor license at noon on November 7th and continue the action on the item to the November 15 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. All right. We will see that matter again at our next meeting. Now, we're going to move on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. We only have one matter there, and that is the resolution accepting donations. Does that require unanimous vote by us or just a supermajority?
Unanimous of who's here.
Okay. Yeah. All right. So we've got Resolution 2022-102, accepting donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves. Second. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2022-102, which accepts donations on behalf of the city of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2022-102, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? That's a serial, that's the first serial aye we've had. It had kind of an interesting rhythm to it, because we kind of went down the line. Resolution 2022-102 is adopted. So this period where we've had giving on the part of our generous donations on the part of our residents, several to the park and rec department, and Catherine and David Taylor generous gift of $500 for the Braemar Memorial Fund that helps everything out as the golf course operates smoothly. And then there were trees at St. John's Park in memory of Jim Hips, and funds came in from three different sources there, Jonathan Erickson and Stacy Roloffs, Patricia Roloffs, and then Patricia Jones. Thanks to those residents for those generous gifts so that we can do some trees at St. John's Park in memory of Jim Hips. And then to the police department, the Edina Crime Prevention Fund provided funds for a cell phone to use in conjunction with our work with the Minnesota Human Trafficking Task Force. So we've got somebody assigned to that Human Trafficking Task Force, and the crime fund provided telephone for that person, so that's nice. All right. That concludes the main portion of the agenda. I'm going to turn now to the, our city manager, Scott Neal, for any manager comments.
I do not have any comments tonight, sir.
All right. Member Jackson, council comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the last couple of weeks have been very busy. I want to highlight a couple of things that I did. One was with the city's climate caucus, we gave a presentation to the Minnesota Society for Municipal Analysts. They had seen our work on the climate emergency resolution that we passed in, I believe, January, and it was a really interesting discussion. We talked about what we are doing as different cities to address climate change, and they were really curious as to how, these are finance people who invest in municipal bonds, and how climate work affects our risk and also the health of our community. And so that was a really robust and fascinating conversation. We also had a meeting of the Southwest Cable Commission last week, and I wanted to just say that Dan Carpenter, who works both for the Cable Commission and also for the city, puts on a class to teach people how to do videos and how to do programs, and he's, we gave him a little extra money or recommended that we give him a little extra money to promote that, and I wanted to promote it because I'm really proud of the work that he does. Looks like a fascinating class, and if you're interested in learning how to put on a television program, we've got a class for that, and he's a great guy. And then finally, we had a conversation with some folks from Metro Transit, a city manager and some of the staff and I did, and it was just very interesting to see how they're engaged with our city on some of the Metro Transit things that are happening here. There wasn't any news broken, but we got to go into depth on their conversations on the BRT line that's coming up and just how they make decisions about where bus lines go. So it was a good discussion, and we'll be applying what we learned as we move forward. So that's my conversations. Thanks.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Nothing from me.
Want to talk about TX at all? Oh, okay. Member Pierce?
Nothing from me.
Oh, thank you. Back to me. First thing I wanted to do is have our clerk Sharon Allison give us a, because we've got a little bit of time, a quick update on the absentee voting that's been taking place at the city here. It seems like it's been active like it was probably pre-COVID, maybe 2018, maybe not quite as active as 2020, but nonetheless, when I come into the city hall, there's a lot of people here that are voting, so look forward to your report.
You are correct, Mr. Mayor. It started out with a bang. On the very first day, we had probably about 117 voters, and it has not slowed down at all. In fact, today, we had 428 voters. We're on the homestretch. This is our last week of voting, and this is the week when it tends to be the busiest, because this is when the voters are able to put their ballots. to put their ballot directly into the ballot counter. So I'm guessing that for the next five days that we have to go, we could probably see a potential of 2,000 voters coming into City Hall. As an update, as far as how many voters we've had as of this evening, we have had a total of 9,086 voters requested an absentee ballot. That is through the county, as well as those that have come through City Hall. As of today, 7,084 voters have returned their ballot, and that is about 19% of the total registered voters in Edina. Of that number, just a little bit over 4,400 or 48% were processed right here in City Hall. So most of the absentee voters to date have been processed at City Hall. And then the number that have returned their ballots to the county totaled to date 2,679. So we are probably, we're at about 25% of total voters that have already, or have requested a ballot, or have voted already. And so it is looking as though we may hit a 30% high of absentee voters in this election. I'd like to give a big shout out to the election staff. They make it look effortless. I mean, it's, they are an amazing group of people. And also to the voters who have been coming in and make it so easy for us to be able to assist them in this process.
Would you talk a little bit about how you go about picking your election judges, and then on Election Day, we're not going to be meeting before Election Day, how you go about verifying that everybody, everybody who was, who should vote was able to vote, and everybody that, everybody that did vote, that their vote was counted properly?
So when a voter comes in, we check them in the state voter registration system, and if they are already registered, they vote. Everything is up to date, and so they're able to fill out their absentee application and get their ballot. If they're not in the state voter's registration system, then we process them as a new voter. And there are certain documents that they're required to provide. One might be a driver's license with their current address. It could be an expired driver's license, which will serve as their photo ID, and a utility bill, or a lease agreement, anything that has the address of where they're living in Edina will serve as documents to register them. And we get them registered on the very same day, and they're able to get their ballot and vote that ballot immediately.
All right, and then...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Member Jackson.
If they don't get a paper statement, how do they, how can they use their utility bill, or other, like a rent document?
If they have it on their phone, that is totally acceptable. I know that a lot of people are getting their bills electronically these days, and that is acceptable to show it to us on their phone.
Thank you.
Now, would you talk a little bit about how you go through the process of selecting election judges that work with you during the whole electoral process, and particularly on Election Day?
Absolutely. So election, those who are interested in serving as an election judge usually reach out to us. We actually have never had to recruit judges, except for when we don't have enough for party balance. Republican judges, for example. In years past, we've always struggled to get Republican judges, and so we've done recruitment drives to get Republican judges. But for the most part, we have had a pretty good group of election judges that reaches out to us, and we have an application online, and anyone who applies are usually accepted to be an election judge. And then they go through the required training that is required by the Secretary of State. They are required to be trained for two hours, and that certification is good for two years.
And then the night after voting is completed, how do you, precinct by precinct, how do you tie out the vote to make sure that everything matches up, if you will?
So on Election Day, the, we're using this poll books at the polling place, and the voting is being transmitted throughout the day to the county's database. At the end of the night, a results tape is the total vote that takes place at each polling place is then transmitted to the county. Head judges will bring in what we call a results tape to us, and that tape is sent down to the county. That is verified against the result that was transmitted to the county. They also, we also have the ballots that were ran through the ballot counter. Those are kept in safe cases, brought back to us. They're kept under lock and key. And so if there ever was an audit that is needed to be done, we would pull those ballots out along with other documentations for the county.
And how long do you retain those paper ballots?
22 months.
Okay. That caused any council members to have questions or comments about the electoral process? Okay, good. Great to have an update, I think, in this time when some folks think elections have questionable authenticity or honesty, that they're fair. I think we take great pride in the fact that we run very fair elections that are easily auditable.
We do, and there are checks and balances in the polling place. There are certain activities that has to be done by two election judges from two major parties. For example, taking the ballots out of the ballot counter at the end of the night requires two election judges from two major parties to do that. So there are many checks and balances along the way to prevent any kind of issues from happening.
All right, good. Thanks for that. Director Milner, you and I had a quick conversation before the meeting started. Folks are asking me, and I'm sure others as well, when is that pedestrian bridge over the crosstown going to be completed by MnDOT?
Yes, Mayor.
And you just found out today, I think, that we're going to get some work done there.
Well, we reached out for a schedule update, because it was, they mentioned the end of October, but we learned now it's going to be pushed back one month. So they're fabricating the fix right now in a warehouse, and they want to place it the week of November 28th. So that's going to require some overnight closures during that week of westbound 62, where that section needs to be replaced. So we'll provide some more information when we get those details from MnDOT. But end of November, they should be doing that replacement.
Okay, great. And then they talked to you a little bit about us potentially designing the new bridge, or leading the effort on designing the new bridge?
Correct. We'll start working, we'll work through those details and see what they're thinking on that standpoint.
Good to hear. Well, then, I asked Member Sutton if he wanted to talk about TEDx. For folks, maybe over the years, you've watched TED Talks on television or on your computer. TED Talks have something called TEDx, which is a licensing agreement. There's three licenses in the state. They try to keep them special. Edina has actually now two of them. They've been doing TEDx talks for adults and youth for about four years, I think. And this is the first year they had an event specifically for youth. So Friday night was TEDx for youth, and then Saturday was TEDx for adults. And folks from this council were at either or both of those events. I happen to be at both. The one on Friday night with the youth was just extraordinary. I mean, some of the MCs, one was a fourth grader that was introducing some of the speakers, and she was just flawless in her introductions. It was really something to behold. And they probably had a dozen speakers on, I think it was a dozen, on Friday night. And the last one was one that Director Bennerott thought we should give a hometown hero award to, Sidney Reilly. And she was an extraordinary presenter, talked about her autism, and she's got a photographic memory, her parents were delightful to talk to afterwards. But she had a whole presentation worked around Robespierre, Abraham Lincoln, and then saving a person's life by crawling through the window at McDonald's in Eden Prairie, and doing the Heimlich maneuver on him. And how she tied all those things together was really remarkable. And, and we didn't have this photo, Director Bennerott, but somebody got it somewhere. It was a photo of her going through the window. And that was pretty interesting, too. And my wife asked, had you ever done that before, jumped out the window? And she said, yeah, I jumped out there once to get somebody, get somebody's credit card that fell on the ground. And the manager said, don't ever do that again. But she did. She did it again, and did the Heimlich maneuver on a kindergarten teacher. And out popped a Chicken McNugget, and, and saved the woman's life. And so afterwards, I was telling her, I said, your presentation was really something, Sidney. I said, I think it could go viral, and she's, be seen all over the world. And she said, oh, great. Chicken McNugget girl goes global. She was pretty cute. So, and then Saturday, the three of us were there, and I wasn't able to say for the whole thing, but there were remarkable speakers on Saturday as well. I want to really thank Cheryl Gunness from the school district, from Community Ed, and her team, and everybody that worked on that as a volunteer. It was an outstanding event in our community. So thanks for that. And that's all I've got. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adjourn the meeting of the city council of the city of Edina on November 1st, 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We stand adjourned.